I am calling the Tuesday, July 8th Planning Board Meeting to order. At this time, we're going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm going to ask if there are any, anybody wants to disqualify themselves from any cases we're to hear tonight? Okay, hearing none. We do have a quorum, and I am going to move on and entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. Moving on to approval of the minutes from our June 10th meeting. If you've had a chance to glance at them, if there's noting any changes, please let us know. If not, I'm going to entertain a motion for approval of the minutes for the June 10th meeting.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. Alright, seeing no old business, we're going to move on to new business. First order of new business, Planning Board 2509, and that is CRMP Inc., Request for Conditional Rezoning of 10.5 Acres from Agriculture District to Conditional Heavy Industrial District for a Batch Concrete Plant. The property address is 5235 Kerituck Highway in Poplar Branch, south of Idlet Road. Tax map 83, parcel 5A, Poplar Branch Township. At this time, we're going to hear from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a conditional rezoning request made by Tim Newsome of CRMP Incorporated on property located in Poplar Branch, just south of Idlet Road. The property is about 10 and 1/2 acres of farmland, and this particular piece, you can see here on the vicinity map, was cut out of the larger parcel. You may have noticed in your agenda packet on the application, there's a note there that says that the recombination plot was recorded after the application was initially received by staff for a much larger parcel. But this application is for this 10 and 1/2 acre parcel that you see here, selected on this map. Zooming in a little bit closer, you can see that it's an area that's adjacent to the muddy motorsports to the south, and a small area for access to the property, and then back by the wooded area of the property is, are the boundaries of the proposed property for rezoning. You can see that the property is currently zoned agriculture, and the properties adjacent to it are zoned agriculture, and across the street, there is some GB along the corridor. The Imagine Kerituck Future Land Use Map classifies the site as G1, which is low-density growth. And you can see that it's close to the O2 that's right there, to the east. This is just kind of showing you, kind of a zoomed-out version of the Future Land Use Map of the Imagine Kerituck 2040 Vision Plan. This parcel that's selected here was that larger parcel before the 10 acres on the south side was cut out, and you, so you can see the proximity to Idlet Road, as well as the area that was identified in the Imagine Kerituck Land Use Plan as the Mid-County Bridge area. That's the G3 area on the map. Here's the Proposed Conceptual Development Plan, which is basically already a site plan, probably has all the elements that would be needed to approve a site plan. We'll zoom in just a little bit here, so you can see the site itself, you can see the access there off of Kerituck Highway. They're proposing buffering that's required by the ordinance for this particular use. You can see that that buffering is occurring on all sides of the proposed property there. Not a lot of impervious coverage proposed, so just a general site layout with the office and the silos, and a little bit of parking, and some material storage areas. Here's an aerial, this was a, not an aerial, rather, an elevation shot that was submitted by the applicant, so the board can kind of understand the project that's being proposed. We did, staff did these little mock-ups of height, so you could kind of get a feel for what a 60-foot-tall silo might look like in relation to other things that you're used to seeing in your daily lives, and I'm sure you're familiar with the large power lines that run through this property. So you can see just some various heights, and some mock-ups of what that might look like, from, at least the height might look like from the road. So currently, the property is zoned agriculture. In agriculture, that district is established to accommodate agriculture and agriculture-related uses at low densities in rural portions of the county. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review your staff report, that included a lot of information from the UDO, as well as the land use plan, and I'm not going to read that verbatim to you, but feel free to stop me if you have any questions along the way. The proposed rezoning is a conditional rezoning to heavy industrial, which is a district that's established to accommodate intense or heavy manufacturing and industrial uses. And the concrete batch plant use is a heavy manufacturing type of use. The land use plan, as I mentioned, classifies the site as G1, low-density growth, again, intended for ag lands and compatible low-density residential, and may be supported by limited small-scale neighborhood retail uses. Some appropriate land uses and development types are listed there for you, including agriculture, tourism-oriented commercial along the highway, ecotourism, water-dependent uses, forestry, and other natural resource-based activities. These are the land use relevant policies of the land use plan. Goal one, you see a lot, probably here at this board, encourage development to occur at densities appropriate for the location, and consider factors including environmentally suitable areas, soils, infrastructure, et cetera. There's also a policy that the Future Land Use Map itself is a guide for decision-making, planning for infrastructure and conservation, and should not be the sole basis for land use decisions. Policies about considering community character and established visions, protecting the uniqueness of the county through preservation of farmland, carefully consider design and location of intensive and potentially incompatible land uses for, to mitigate compatibility issues, encourage industrial, this is obviously very relevant to this particular request, encourage new residential uses to locate in existing or planned industrial sites and locate on suitable land with unique locational advantages, and support new and existing commercial developments that adhere to quality, community appearance, and design standards. Some economic development policies, support retention and expansion of businesses, promote development of new businesses, attract compatible industrial operations, and support existing industries. And industrial development shall be located on land that's physically suitable and has unique locational advantages for industry. Some transportation policies, preserving the traffic flow, safety, access of major highways and roads, and support the Mid-County Bridge to provide critical traffic relief. Environment policies to ensure the protection and preservation of prime ag lands. Support measures to protect and promote forests and farmland per the county's agricultural development plan. Encourage farmers and timber operators to use best management practices. Alright, here's some policies related to the Lower Kerituck, which is one of the geographic areas of the county, generally to foster growth and development while maintaining the distinctive natural environment and rural character. New development should be properly planned so as not to adversely impact the character of the area, and peace and quiet traditionally enjoyed by its residents. Recognize community desire for additional neighborhood-level services, retail, and dining. There's some actions of the plan. I'm sure you're familiar somewhat with the land use plan of the county Imagine Kerituck 2040 Vision Plan, and it's laid out with policies, and then there's implementation actions, so that's where these come from, the implementation matrix of Chapter 4. Lower Kerituck Action 1, establish key gateways at the following locations, future Mid-Kerituck Bridge Landing, and Action 14 for Lower Kerituck, develop a civic master plan for future Mid-Kerituck Bridge Landing. Then for the sub-area, Idlet Water, Lively Churches Island, continue to encourage predominantly low-density residential. The Mid-County Bridge area, commercial development should be located near US 158. And location and design of a development in this area should not compromise traffic-moving function of the new bridge. And there's some policies related to the G1 Trans Act about preferring conservation subdivisions, and supporting development of agriculture-based businesses and agritourism This is a portion of the community vision statement of the plan, that economic development ventures support existing residents and create quality jobs in the community. New commercial unemployment development diversifies the local economy while maintaining balance with the existing community character, and the county fosters business opportunities by maintaining an excellent education system that prepares students for a prosperous future. Then there's the guiding principles, these are what's the basis for all of the policies, goals, and actions of the plan. Coordinated growth to strategically direct growth towards areas that are accessible to existing or planned transportation networks, water and wastewater, and compatible with surrounding land uses. Destination points, establish and enhance key destinations throughout the county, including natural and cultural centers. Create walkable mixed-use neighborhoods and develop destination-quality recreation facilities and trails, and economic prosperity and resilience, cultivate a diverse economy that encourages the growth of traditional sectors while fostering new opportunities for nature-based recreation, tourism, and small-business growth. Provide a range of housing types and land development densities appropriate for attracting quality, environmentally-compatible businesses and industries that strengthen the county tax base. As you're aware, there are these conditional rezoning review standards that you may consider when determining whether to recommend approval or denial, or some sort of conditional approval of the proposed zoning map amendment. These standards are also in your staff report, along with some staff commentary. Just keep in mind that if you do identify potential conditions that you would like to offer, or that you feel like would be needed for this particular rezoning, that the applicant will need to consent to those conditions. The TRC recommends that, well, let me just read this recommendation directly, because it's, there's lots of policies of the plan that speak to encouraging economic development, but there's also policies that speak to community character, and there's actions about developing master plans in certain areas, and this is not necessarily in that G3 area we looked at of the Future Land Use Map, but is certainly close, and probably needs to be looked at along with that plan, which has not been done yet. So staff feels that we cannot recommend, definitively recommend approval of this request, but that this conditional rezoning is a legislative decision, and special considerations should be given to the goals and policies of the plan when we create new industrial zoning and heavy manufacturing uses in the county, especially along the corridor. And so, I'm not going to read the rest of that, but just keep that in mind when you're discussing this and determining whether you want to recommend approval or denial. Let's see. These are the conditions of approval that were recommended by the applicant. Again, only conditions mutually agreed to by the owners may be approved as part of a conditional rezoning. That the development of the property shall conform to the proposed conceptual development plan. The use shall have secure access, including gates with access codes for authorized workers. The use shall include appropriate security measures, including surveillance cameras and lighting. The concrete apron shall be extended from Kerituck Highway to the security gate, and the driveway shall be improved with washed aggregate or asphalt millings to reduce dust. So those, and then obviously, number one of that was that the development should conform to the plan that I showed you earlier in the presentation. I do not, I don't believe I have any other, anything else to tell you at this point regarding this application, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff from the board?
Did I miss it on there? What is the dimensions of the physical plant versus the dimensions of the property?
I doubt that we can see that that closely, Tom, but I'll go back to the site plan.
It seems like a more long, narrow.
Right, so here's the access here.
Okay.
And you can see, see if I can zoom, no, can't do it here, got to go. So you can see the silos here?
Yes.
And that, you know, the area of vehicular travel. This is water storage here, material storage back here, the office here. So, looks like about a third of the site?
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions?
I have a couple of questions, if I may. Am I right, am I correct in identifying the parcel as lying at south and east of the Mud Bog?
It's north. It's north of the Mud Bog. Let me go back to the aerial for you. There we go. You see them?
Sure, it's property line with it.
Yeah.
Here's the current muddy motorsports park here.
Okay.
In the subject parcel here.
Okay, I got you.
Is that the Mud Bog Park?
That's the muddy sports.
Yeah, yeah, Digger.
Ah.
Yeah, great, yeah.
Dennis Anderson.
A couple of questions. As we all know, there's a sand pit has appeared immediately to the south of this property here. Is, are these two entirely different situations? Might this supposed sand pit be used as a source of sand, because it's obviously a raw material of what we're proposing here? Is it going to be used to supply sand to the plant at all, do we know?
That would be a question for the applicant, I've not heard that.
Right, right.
I can answer now if you'd like.
Can you come up to the?
Yeah, I'm sure there's several questions.
Yeah.
Good evening, board.
Please state your name and address for the board, thank you.
Good evening, board. I'm Tim Newsome with Commercial Ready Mix from Wynton. Okay, to answer your question, I'm not sure any, about the sand pit that's immediately safe of this proposed property, but it will not be used for any raw material uses for our use.
So essentially, all the raw materials, be it sand, or gravel, or rock, or whatever, would be trucked onto the site?
Be trucked in from other locations, yes, sir.
Okay.
Has to be approved product for NC DOT purposes.
Okay. A second question, if I may. Until recently, the county had some serious misgivings about anything, any type of building that was metal. And I can assure you that a metal storage building, for example, because it has an eight-foot, eight-foot up to the eaves, has to have an eight-foot privacy fence to obscure it from public view. Now, this is obviously an impossibility to obscure this from public view, I realize that. And I'm all for development, I think it's a great idea, I'm sure there's an absolute need for it. If you've gone to this trouble to acquire the land, or possibly acquire the land and design the plant, I'm sure it's in your mind that, yes, we can sell this stuff with more power to you. However, if it were to be approved, and I hope that it is, then it necessitates, I would suggest, a change in our rules whereby, you know, if you've got to obscure an eight-foot-tall building from public view, with the same distance from a road that this will be, then this, to do the same here would be impossible. So, a change in the rules, I would suggest, is absolutely necessary.
Well, this is a different zoning district, so this is a heavy industrial zoning district that's not have the same design or facade standards as a self-service storage use that would be in a business zoning district. So it's a different set of standards for this particular project, because of the zoning district.
Okay. Well, these were my questions.
Yes, what's your relationship in this endeavor?
I'm an owner.
You're the owner.
Of Commercial Ready Mix.
Okay, so this is being.
We're a family business, we started in 1975.
Do you currently have plants, other plants in the area?
14.
14 plants, so there's a big demand for more. These other plants, any of the others surrounded by farmland, as this one is?
I had to think about that, I don't think so.
Okay. My big concerns on this is that the release of the dust, and I know you probably have to keep up with the current engineering standards for, as far as the environmental part of it, but that dust is a, is a big worry on the silica part and different agents that make up the cement. It's.
There's a dust collection system that's on this Ready Mix plant.
A watered-down system, is that how it works?
It's a vacuum system.
A vacuum.
So the dust is created at the loading area, so when that truck, when the product goes into the truck, that's when the dust is created.
Okay.
There's a vacuum system that collects that dust.
And then what?
Essentially, a dust collector.
Okay, and then what happens with it?
It goes through a filtration system, it goes back in the silo.
Okay.
To get reused.
How about the dust that does get outside of that system on the ground there, what, is there any engineering to keep what runoff there is collected and re-filter that?
Yes, runoff from the area, the loadout area is funneled over to.
The entire area, yes.
It's funneled over to washout pits, yes.
I'm sorry, say that again.
It's funneled over to washout pits, and I think that may be on the preliminary drawing, washout pits.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I think the biggest concern I would have is for the agriculture around it, is, but the big thing is containing the dust and not letting any of the water that has been, you know, exposed to the dust get into the farm fields.
We're regulated by North Carolina, so we will be checked.
Okay, as far as the agriculture nearby?
Not about the agriculture, but about if anything leaves our property.
Okay.
If any runoff occurs.
Okay, how is that done, do you know?
Not exactly.
Okay.
Yes.
Alright.
You mean, how is it checked?
Yes.
I'm not, I'm not sure how it's checked, but we have to, we have to comply.
Okay, alright. Thank you.
Now, the next dust issue would be trucks traveling into the road, and that's been addressed by either some clean washed aggregate or asphalt millings, to try to keep the dust down to a minimum.
Now, the trucks that are getting loaded up, I mean, they're getting loaded up with the water, they've got the mixture at the same time.
Right.
So the dust you're talking about is.
It's just from tires, just from driving in.
From driving.
Just driving in a.
Which is not a harmful dust.
It's not, but it's.
But the dust that makes concrete actually does have some harmful properties.
That's right.
Okay.
Yes.
So I'm not so worried about the dust that would.
I understand.
That'd be more inconvenient, surrounded by farmland, I don't think that dust would be any hurt, be cleared out in the next rain.
It would not be.
So my big concern would be the dust that, the actual concrete, the filtration system of that, and then being certain that the water treatment system of the area surrounding it does not leach into the farmlands, because it would be, it would be evident right away, because basically you'd be killing the roots of the nearby vegetation.
Sure.
Yeah, alright.
So we have dust collection systems at all of our plants.
I, my biggest thing as far as, is that what history do we have of it being, that's why I asked the question, of being next to farmland, and, you know, where people are grown, trying to grow crops.
Well, we have Ready Mix plants that are within Thames, Edington, Elizabeth City, Moayok. We have seven plants in Virginia at different locations.
Right, right. The one in Moayok.
All surrounding residential.
The one in Moayok, is that right near by East Coast, Dimma?
It is, just in front of East Coast.
You got the farmland and stuff there.
So there is farmland relatively close.
Any more questions for staff?
I have one for you. What is your highest decimal reading of noise that this thing creates?
Never, never have been asked to check it.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know.
Well, I'm thinking, just looking around it, I mean, you had sag around it, but you got some general business.
Will be quieter than the motorsports next to us.
Alright, well, I, okay. Just don't want heavy noise to affect other general business that may eventually come around.
It's the noise from trucks, that's the latest thing on that site, would be noise from trucks.
Okay.
Noise from the loader, you know, you know, moving aggregate on the site, so I can't imagine that would be noise that would be harmful to the neighbor.
I guess you're using fly ash as well, too, correct?
Yes.
Is that brought in as well?
It is, it's trucked in.
Okay. And I guess the silica fume is brought in?
No silica.
Okay, no silica?
Yes, there would not be any silica.
Okay.
I don't suspect any silica on this project.
Okay, okay, interesting. It's kind of a major component, though, isn't it?
That silica fume.
It's not?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. This will essentially be cement, fly ash, large aggregate, stone, sand, admixtures.
I'm probably saying this wrong, but what is metacolin? Metacolin, M-E-T-A-K-O, I'm sorry, A-O-L-I-N, it's also a.
Metacolite?
Yeah. Do you use that in your plants?
That's something that's possibly found natural in the stone, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Okay.
It's not a component of concrete.
Yeah, my exposure to cement plants was a long time ago, and I'm sure there was a lot less regulation, so hence some of my questions on containing the dust.
Yes.
So they've probably come a long, long way in the 25-plus years that, I think, last time I walked through one.
Without a dust collection system, there would be a problem, there would be dust.
Yeah, that would be bad.
Yes, we, we don't have any plants without dust collection systems.
Okay. Yeah, I think my biggest things were, would be, what would escape there would not be good, although it would be self-evident pretty quickly in the crops, and then the other would be the noise.
Well, you brought up using fly ash with this, correct?
Yes, sir.
I remember Chesapeake built a golf course on fly ash, and how it.
Centerville Turnpike.
Centerville Turnpike, and it contaminated a lot of underground water. How do you store your fly ash when you bring it into mix, do you keep it in barrels?
Overhead silo.
Okay, so it's all there?
It's a processed product that's hauled in on a dry bulk tanker.
Mm-hmm.
It's put in an overhead silo, it's metered aid.
Okay.
Into the truck, it is not on the grain, it's not exposed in any, any way.
And all these silos have vacuum systems on it, correct, to collect the dust?
The only dust will come from this, was the loading process.
Okay.
So when the product is dropped into the mixer, that's where the dust, potential dust could be.
How are your other plants doing, do they have no problem with keeping up with the regulations on that containment?
Yes, sir.
Good?
Yes, sir.
I mean, that's the only two concerns I had, was the noise you brought up, and certainly any escaping components, but.
Yeah, this was almost any contamination of the surrounding areas.
Right, right.
The thing.
But it's, it's kind of, like I said, it's self-evident, because as soon as it gets contaminated, the crops, it tears up the roots of the crops, and basically, you'd see it right away.
Okay.
Alright, that's all I had.
One last one. What if the bridge doesn't go through, will this still be a profitable venture for you?
That's a good question.
Because, yeah, I understand.
No one knows the answer.
Nobody knows the answer, but I understand your driver.
Will we have all the answers?
I get your driver, and he has right next to the area, I got that.
Yes, sir.
So, you have, I would hate to see, you know, go through all this trouble, then saying, yeah, we can't, the bridge isn't coming, or delayed another, I don't know, 30 years, or whatever, but it'll still work out for you either way?
The main, the main reason for this proposal is because of the bridge.
Mm-hmm.
If the bridge doesn't come. If the bridge doesn't come, then what will we do? I don't know.
Okay.
I'm not sure. I think we will move forward if we get, if we get a positive from this board and from the Board of Commissioners, we will probably move forward and purchase the property. We will probably not put a plan up until we know the bridge is coming for sure.
That's all I have.
Okay, any more questions, or anyone else that's signed up to speak? To come forward?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just then, your name and address.
Good evening, Chairman and remaining board members, my name is Casey Varnell, I am the attorney for the applicant who you just got the pleasure of meeting, I did, I'm sure he's probably kicking himself, because he wanted to mention this himself, but staff, he wanted to, we thought I'd be maybe the first to speak, but you guys have been great to work with, they really appreciate all the time, assistance and advice that you guys have given, so I did want to point that out, let you guys know it as well, you got a really good staff up here, so. I'm just gonna hit just a few high points, guys, nobody wants to hear a lawyer talk. The land use plan and the future land use map, given that was one of the negatives, if you will, in the staff report, just wanted to touch on that briefly. As Mr. Newsom stated, the whole purpose of the application is for this concrete plant, and the reason being is its proximity to the proposed bridge landing for the mid-Currituck County Bridge. I'd point you, and you probably have read it, but there's a report, or call it correspondence from Mr. Randy Midget, that was sent on behalf of North Carolina Department of Transportation, and that's actually within your materials, and you know, he confirms that the manufacture of quality concrete is absolutely crucial, and I think probably as a general proposition, we all know that, but, I mean, what does that really mean, and what does that, and how does that relate to the area or the proximity of a plant to a given location? Well, as confirmed in that report, one of the factors, for example, are high temps, right, high temperatures, or the temperature of the concrete. You've got to pour it, and that time, in that timeframe, it needs to be poured in pretty quick succession, and that timeframe starts running as soon as that batch is produced, so if you're not near the construction location, then you may have, let's just call it bad concrete, and then the state, because of their standards, gone, kick it out. So if we don't have plants here, if Currituck County doesn't have plants located in close proximity, and we would state there are not any currently in close enough proximity to properly build this bridge, then who built it then, how does the bridge get built? So again, that's certainly one of the reasons here, and I would note, when I brought up the land use plan, the policy as to industrial uses, which was Turner spoke on, it does state as part of that policy that new industrial uses are preferred to be within existing industrial sites or planned industrial sites. Well, there's none of those in proximity to the bridge landing location, and that, again, is why we're here before you, but if you go further in that policy, it also states that industrial uses should be put on suitable land that has a unique characteristic for that particular use, and we think we meet that policy. We think that that actually helps us comply with the land use plan and the future land use map, because again, the uniqueness of this location, of this particular parcel, is what is going to help and allow that bridge to get built. And just in general speak, furthering the Currituck County plan of growth and development and safety that will come from the bridge, some of which Ms. Turner touched on. So, you know, again, would point out, the ten-point-five acre parcel come, that is proposed for rezoning comes from a hundred and forty-seven acre parent parcel. The rest of that parcel stays agriculture, the rest of that parcel is gonna remain for, as far as we know, for farmland use. We're certainly not proposing to do anything with it, and as Mr. Newsom has said, he intends no negative impact on any surrounding agricultural land. So with that being said, and given the land use plan was a negative, we would just ask you to consider that that can't be, as stated by staff, can't be your sole basis for making a decision for denying an application such as this. So we just ask you to keep in mind the positives that are listed within the staff report, and that Mr. Strater here will enlighten you guys on as well, so thank you very much, and I'll stay up here in case you have any questions of a legal nature, but don't come to me for any of this technical stuff, all of what y'all just heard from Mr. Newsom and what he'll say is over my head, so. But I'll stand for questions after Mr. Strater's done.
Good evening.
Hi.
Chairman, members of the board, Michael Strater, I'm an engineer with Withers Ravanell, formerly Quibon Associates. So I did notice that many of your questions were kind of site plan related, which is good, I mean, that's good, you're thinking ahead, but obviously the application is for a conditional rezoning from the agricultural district to the conditional heavy industrial zone. So I did want to kind of touch on some of the policies and guidelines that we heard, because I mean, obviously that's how you're having to, you base your decision, you're looking at all the guidelines and policies, and how it relates to the U D O, and how it relates to the the future land use plan. Oh, and one other thing I did want to point out, and obviously Tim has been very positive, he's a great guy, you've noticed, he's very transparent and honest, he'll tell you his life story if you asked him, and CRMP, they are the ones that have the washed red shiny trucks running up and down the road, not all the other concrete trucks that don't look the same. So he runs a very clean, tight-knit, and we do manage a lot of his other sites, and I can attest to Mr. Hurley's question that they're all regulated by N P D S permits, they all, so they're all state and federal permits, there's all sorts of permits that go along with it, and they'll all have to be in place before a site plan approval is granted by your county staff. Washdown areas, runoff, I mean, all of that has to be collected, they use recycle pits, they, it will be a tight run operation. And we did, he was so willing to work anywhere and everywhere within the county, knowing that it had to be within close proximity of the bridge. We've been really open and, you know, inquisitive about what parcels could be, you know, could lend itself to a, to being, to handle a concrete plant, so obviously we started by looking at all the properly zoned parcels. The nearest properly zoned area is Maple Industrial Park at the airport, and obviously, a lot of that is driven by the county. So we did approach the county, and we were informed that a concrete plant is not conducive use for what's planned there. So I'm sure that there are uses planned that don't involve a concrete plant. That's okay, because the distance that it would have taken to get to the mid-Currituck Bridge landing, it would have been pushing it as far as temperature and meeting specifications, not to mention having to go through, back and forth through coin shock, which that could lead to potential unknown delays in traffic, not to mention just, you're gonna see all these weighted-down concrete trucks going, so that's why we feel like we've, we have found the most suitable location for a concrete plant, where, where we've shown it, and he didn't choose this because of the value of the land, I mean, it's not the most economical location, that is not the case here, we've chosen a spot that seems to lend itself best, but also, we took, you know, a lot of your planning staff, Jason, and a lot of folks gave us a lot of input to consider, so we've been studying the DOT maps, and because Jenny stated that a master plan for that mid-Currituck Bridge area, it hasn't been developed. So you don't have a land use plan that we can use to position anything, so we're having to study the maps and say, okay, well, we need to be far enough away from that, that landing, so that you can have, you know, you can have that general business, or if you want retail, if you want that type of, it can happen, but, and we're not right on top of it, because you don't want heavy industrial to be smack dab in the middle of your G B, so we've tried to position things, and we're not on the highway frontage, we've pushed it as far back as we possibly can, all the way back to the existing tree line, because the marsh starts not too much farther from there, so we've pushed it away from the road as much as possible, I don't know if you needed to pull the conceptual development plan up. And then, of course, the heavy, Dominion's heavy transmission mains are running north-south through this area, so we've actually positioned the plant to the east behind the main transmission main, and I appreciated the elevations that you saw of, you know, potential heights of silos relative to the transmission main relative. If you've driven by here enough, you kind of know that the land actually, you may not be able to see a vehicle at ground level in that location, but obviously if you put a silo, okay, you're gonna see something, but you're also seeing, you know, the stadium or the stands, the transmission main. And then to answer, I heard some technical questions, so the width of that narrow flagpole shape, it's sized to allow for a twenty-five-foot drive, twenty-five-foot buffers on the other side, so that's seventy-five foot, I believe we ended up at about eighty-foot width of that flagpole, and then it, obviously, once it gets behind the power easement, that's when it expands out to more of the, to encompass the full ten-and-a-half acres. And one other important thing that I felt like I should at least say, since the current landowner's not here, to say it for me, is that by selling off this land to the, to Mr. Newsom, it allows for the, and they're very big proponents of preservation and of the farming use, so what they want to do is they want to basically put the residual of this area, not the ten-and-a-half acres, the ten-and-a-half acres is gonna, would potentially be zoned heavy industrial, but the residual, hundred-and-twenty-four plus, plus the portion on the other side of the highway, they would put that in a preserve, because they want to preserve all of that land. They actually don't want the general business that may come with the, with the bridge development. I don't know how that sits with the county, but I'm just communicating what we've heard from the current landowner. But in our minds, that would potentially alleviate any other negative complainants, I mean, if there were any other developments that could potentially be developed around the plant, there wouldn't be a subdivision or a shopping center or other potential future complainants, because their idea is that they would preserve that full residual area as agricultural, because they want to continue the farming use. But I was gonna hit on some of the policies, but I feel like we've spent enough of our time, so I would be more willing to hear what questions that you may have for us.
Right, I guess it's both, both the county and yourself, whoever can answer it, is that this preservation of agriculture, has that already been approached to the county for that surrounding area? It has not, okay, so.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
And that came up at our, our community meeting that we held, like, obviously, we, this requires pre-application conferences, which we had multiple, we've had community meetings, so we've advertised it, we've invited the public. So the landowner was present at the community meeting, and that's when they expressed to, oh shit, can't, who was the other planner who was there with us, with Jason?
Jason.
Patrick Leary?
Patrick, yeah, so, and they were receptive to that, and said that, yeah, that probably would bode well, because it eliminates any future complainants.
Yeah, it would.
I'll just add that they wouldn't necessarily contact the county about preservation, I mean, there could be other conservation.
Is that a state thing?
There could be nonprofits, there could be lots of ways they could put it in some sort of preservation.
And I was, Ms. Turner, just to make sure too, is there anything within your code, from just a full-on or straightforward conservation easement, almost like a covenant on their own land, to where if they go to sell it, it must only be used, because, I mean, we've obviously done that in various situations, but there could be some form of restrictive covenant that I wouldn't even think would need to be a county approved.
Yeah, there could be, that's correct, yeah, yeah, so that's what I'm saying, it wouldn't, we wouldn't, they wouldn't necessarily have to approach the county about doing something to preserve their property.
Got you, thank you, Mayor.
Tom, I do know that, can't speak to this, but some other family members of that have put a big piece of their land in a conservation, what they're talking about, some, but, and I mean, they would do it here, I'm just saying, I know that they have done that with some of their other land.
Is that usually like a twenty-five-year type thing?
Where it would never be developed as well.
It could be, depending on the, that's the beautiful thing, I guess, about having the owner do it.
That's not to say that would happen here, I'm just saying, I know that that family has done that with another piece of property.
Interesting, just another side question, is the, what is that, a thirty, two-hundred, and I guess a two-thirty K V line that runs nearby there?
The transmission main?
Yeah, yeah, is it two-thirty? That's pretty significant wheeling power there, how far away is that from the plant?
It's, so it's in a, it was about a one-hundred-and-thirty or one-hundred-and-sixty-foot right-of-way, and we're completely beyond, we're, the plant, actually, the whole ten-and-a-half acres is outside of that.
Okay.
Right-of-way.
Well, I know it would have to be outside of the right-of-way, but physically.
It doesn't have to be, but it is.
Oh, it doesn't?
Doesn't have to be. You can get a right-of-way approach.
Yeah. How far are you from the right-of-way now?
We're outside of the right-of-way, so the front parcel line. Account for, there's gonna be a, I believe, a thirty or a sixty-foot expansion of that transmission main.
Okay.
And we are just outside of that.
Okay, again, just throwing this out there, another real reason for that dust collection is that I know that the dust given off from a concrete plant landing on a two-thirty K V insulator is an excellent mixture for leaking voltage to ground and those type of faults, so.
So we could probably provide, we can pull some distances for you, but basically, to summarize that, I mean, so the transmission main is centered in this, I can't, I need reading glasses. It's centered in this approximate one-hundred-and-sixty-foot right-of-way, so that's the front of the property, actually, no, that's not even the front because we're accounting for a future expansion, so we're another thirty-foot, so that's the front of the parcel line, and then we're probably fifty-foot or so before the actual plant is situated.
When you say planning for a future expansion, do you mean from the power line itself?
Dominion has, they've proposed future expansion, or expansion of their power easement.
Oh, yeah.
Now you can see it.
So it's currently a hundred-and-twenty, and it will be a hundred-and-sixty.
Are they putting your own little substation there, because you're talking about big three-phase motors, you know, and so, is there, where do you get your power from for there?
No, sir. Four-eighty-three phase, four-eighty-three phase four hundred amps, so it's not.
Oh, it's not, it's really not that much, okay, okay.
So to answer your concern, just a minute ago, about the dust and the power lines, so at our Edington location, there's a substation just beside of us, at our Edington location.
Okay.
And we've been there, that plant was there before, we purchased it from an existing owner, and we purchased it in ninety-seven, I think.
And there's certainly adequate power then out of the local substation for what your draw would be?
Yes, sir, it's not, it's not a huge draw.
Okay, yeah. Four-eighty's the top voltage, huh?
So just four-eighty-three phase and four hundred amps, so that's not a, not a huge deal.
That's interesting, okay, thanks. How did Dominion feel about it, besides selling some more power in that area, as far as you guys being close to their power lines?
We haven't, we haven't made, mentioned that to Dominion, so.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I'm not sure that it's an issue, haven't never, it's never come up as an issue in the past in any other location.
Yeah, again, I was, it dates way back before the good dust collection, but having flown lines that, looking at them firmly and seeing the leaking voltage patterns coming off the insulators because of the concrete dust.
Right.
You know, so it's a catalyst for leaking voltage as well, but all that, so much of my concern is covered by a good collection, dust collection system, yeah, okay. That's really all I had.
The only, the last thing that comes to mind before you either ask me more questions or go into deliberations is our, I was reminded that our very first initial original submittal, we included the request for the conditional rezone, but also, and this was based on some feedback that we did have during our pre-application conferences, we also included an amendment to the land use plan to accommodate to the land use plan to accommodate the issues that we're, that we're kind of hearing. And it was during that first round of TRC review comments that we were actually asked to remove the references to the land use plan amendment that it wasn't necessary. So I think that that, the G1 discussion about low growth or low-density growth, maybe that's not as much of a concern as it looks in the, in that, the one first, number one inconsistency that I read in the report.
Gotcha. How many, Tim, how many employees or new employees are gonna be from this, do you mind me asking? You're obviously, I'd love to see manufacturing happening in our country, but.
I would think 10 to 12 at this location.
Yeah.
Of course, it depends upon the demand of the bridge contractor.
Right.
And of course, that remains to be seen.
Yeah, thank you, I was just curious on that.
Thank you.
Any more questions for the applicant or for staff? Okay, hearing none. Does the board have any discussions with each other? I want everybody to keep in mind, this is a conditional rezoning that we're voting on.
Exactly.
So specific questions, you know, very good and well, but we are rezoning, and I want to make sure we understand this. This conditional rezoning is specifically for this plant.
Correct. Right.
Okay.
This use, that site plan, generally, I mean, there could be some minor changes.
Changes, but it is not, you know, we are not rezoning the property, it's a conditional rezoning. We are just not making a rezoning for heavy industrial from ag. It's a conditional rezoning. I just want us to be clear on that, because that does make a difference. Because if, if something were to happen and things were to just totally fall apart, then we're back to, it's gonna be agriculture as it started, correct?
Well, they would need to rezone.
Rezone it again.
Okay.
That's good to know.
Rezone it again.
Would that happen automatically?
Jenny, would that happen automatically? But I mean, think, I think if it, if it doesn't happen, then it just, we're back to square one, they would have to apply it again to have it rezoned, general business, keep it ag, residential, barn doors open.
So what you're saying, specifically for this plant, otherwise?
Exactly. This is specifically for what you're seeing in front of you.
That's good.
That's correct. So it doesn't revert back, it's just, this is the, this is what's allowed on that property, and to change that would need another process like this, either to a straight zoning or a different conditional.
Change, it could be general business, it could go to resident, they could come and...
That's a great point.
Yeah, so I just want everybody to be clear on what we're, what we're voting on.
Well, if this bridge does get built, that entire area's gonna explode.
There's gonna be more effect on the mainland with the bridge being built than I think there's gonna be in Corolla.
Yeah, yes.
You're gonna see more effect on mainland Currituck than you're gonna see on the beaches.
Since most of that around is general business.
Right. Everything's already platted in Corolla, pretty much the way it's gonna be. It's gonna be much more significant changes on, I believe, on the mainland.
Well, just thinking about the future, that's all, you know, what could possibly happen.
Yeah.
I guess anything can happen.
But, okay. Hearing no more discussion, you got some more questions?
Do we know any kind of update on the state's proposal of the start for the bridge?
I don't have any updates.
Doesn't anyone know that? Go ahead.
All right. Any more discussion? If not, we're gonna open the floor for a motion. You've got your cheat sheets, don't you?
2509, right?
That's it.
I'll make a motion. I'll make the motion. Make a motion to approve the PB 25-09 CRMP Incorporated in Conditional rezoning, because the request is in conformance with the general purpose and intent of the Unified Development Ordinance, and is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine Current Act 2040 Vision Plan, including, well, including the, I don't think we have any that we're including.
Well, you need to, you need to find some in your staff report of policies that support
Oh, it's gotta be found within there? Didn't make it through TRC, so it's gonna be kind of tough to come up with something. I'm not sure what you're asking me there, Jenny.
So you just need to cite some land use plan policies that you will see in your staff report that you believe supports your decision to approve this rezoning.
Okay, well, the biggest one was, one was just mentioned to me, is the fact that it's conditional and would reset.
Right, so there's land use policies and goals, economic development, transportation.
Yeah. Give us a moment, we're gonna flip through some pages here and find out. Here we go. All right, so we got on page 12 of 78, we got the land use goals, 1 through 13. On page 12, we got economic development goals, that's gonna go, goal 1, goal 5, it kind of jumps around. And then, also, we've got environment, transportation, and this is gonna be pages 12, 13. And it's gonna continue on to page 14, stopping at, I think I'm correct, and correct me, Jenny, if I'm wrong, stopping at zoning map amendment review standards. So if you're looking at that, pretty much page 12, 13, and pretty much half of 14.
You don't want all those read out, do you?
No, but you can, you can reference.
Need to pigeonhole certain ones within your motion.
Right.
Okay.
Whether it's land use goal 1, or land use policy 1.1, or economic development goal 1. Just a couple of policies that support the reason why you believe this should be approved.
There you go.
I think goal 2, carefully consider the design and location of the, of the intensive and potentially incompatible land uses to mitigate compatibility.
Check off what you want to say.
All right.
And then you put it in the form of a motion.
Okay.
You don't have to read the policy itself, as long as you've referenced the policy.
Okay. All right, I referenced policy, goal 1, and one, policy 1.1.
Mid-County Bridge Area Policy 3.2, Tom?
3.2?
If you look it up, page 13.
Mid-County Bridge. There you go.
Thank you. Policy, Mid-County Bridge Area, Policy 3.2. I guess 3.3 as well, we've already talked about that, how it will not impact that. Do you see anything in there about the conditional?
No. That's gonna not be under these type of narratives.
Anybody else say anymore?
Maybe transportation policy 1.1, it's top of 13, support the Mid-County Bridge.
Top of 13, okay. That is probably a good one, too. All right, so transportation, policy 1.1. Anybody else?
Anything else, guys? Cherie, I'm gonna, can you read that back to us? I hate to put you on the spot, but let's make sure we've got it all.
He said land use goal 1, that was the first one he read off. And then he said policy 1.2. He did say goal 2. Policy 3.2, 3.3, and transportation policy 1.1.
And those were Mid-County Bridge Area Policies 3.2 and 3.3.
Yes.
Okay.
And land use goals 1, policy 1.1, and land use goal 2, is that right? I just want to make sure we're referencing the right ones. And then transportation policy 1.1.
Page 13, the bottom of page 13.
Okay.
The community vision statement.
Anything else?
I don't know if that falls under it, can we? Community vision statement?
That can be why you believe the request is reasonable and in the public interest, which is the next part of your motion.
Land use goal 2, was that mentioned? And policy 2.3?
We did not do 2.3.
Of land use?
Yeah, I think that was the first one we said, wasn't it? 2.3?
2.3.
Under land use.
Under land use.
Yes. Well, let's add that, if it's not, if we missed it.
You did goal 2 and 2.3.
Yeah.
Is that what you have?
For that matter, goal 3 as well.
Goal 3 as well?
Yeah.
So, if I can help you a little bit here, Tom, and you just correct me if I'm wrong, you're saying that you're recommending approval because it's consistent with the land use plan, land use goal 1, land use policy 1.1, land use goal 2, land use policy 2.3, land use goal 3, transportation policy 1.1, Mid-County Bridge Area Policy 3.2 and 3.3? And the request is reasonable and in the public interest, because it's consistent with the community vision statement, which is at the bottom of page 13?
Yes.
Okay. And then, there's, do you want to include the applicant's recommended conditions of approval as part of your motion?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Got it.
All right. Okay. Is that clear with mud, guys?
Thanks for the teamwork on that.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, likewise, nay.
Four things.
Okay, anybody need a break after that?
None of my hands good.
Okay.
Wish they would've given us water. Got parched on that one, I bet you did.
Do you want to go get one?
That was good.
Okay.
That was a loaded one.
Okay, move, moving on. Item 2, under new business, Planning Board 25-12, Currituck County, request for a housekeeping amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance. This time, we'll hear from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And right as the meeting was commencing, I handed out just a few revisions, another reference to a table that needs to be corrected. So housekeeping amendments do not change any policy, just kind of cleans up some areas of the ordinance that need to be cleaned up. And so, you can see here that we're changing our name, we changed our name, or maybe the Board of Commissioners changed the name of our department back to Planning and Inspections. So we want to make sure our ordinance is consistent with our current nomenclature. Item 2 is the term principal and principal are, have used interchangeably, they're homonyms. The wrong one is there in certain instances, and I'd like to fix that, so we're gonna fix that. And there's just one instance where the principal rule use is still in the ordinance, so I had to keep that in the definition of registered engineer. This was, this is cleanup from, there's been, there was some history several years ago with solar energy facilities and solar arrays. The board was working on text amendment language with standards and what would be required there. And when the solar energy facility was re-implemented into the ordinance, solar array wasn't deleted, so the summary use table here says you can't do a solar array, but you can do a solar energies facility in ag, subject to specific standards. But the definitions of both of those things are the exact same definition, so I want to clean that up. Same with just cleaning that up here in the parking requirements. So solar array will become solar energy facility for consistency. Same here in the examples of the utility use here, solar arrays will become solar energy facility. And if the board doesn't mind, I'm gonna pluralize this when it's changed, because it should be solar energy facilities, plural. The definition of solar array will just be deleted, and we'll just have a definition of solar energy facility. And then, there's some references, when, when the Currituck Station Plan was adopted, the summary use table had to expand, and so there were two tables. One that had all the base zoning districts, and one that had planned development in Currituck Station, which was a planned development. So when the Currituck Station ordinance was removed, or the, the table went back to be in one table, but there's some leftover references to that table B, which is no longer there, so this section is just cleaning that up. And that was the addition that I gave you right before the meeting tonight. And so, you can see here that there's, there's a reference to table B, which no longer exists, so that will become A. Again, and special use permit, so this, this will just be stricken. You're familiar with text amendment review standards, and staff recommends approval because it's consistent with the land use plan and the ordinance. And that concludes my presentation on this one.
All right. Any questions for staff? Any discussion? Hearing none? I'm gonna entertain a motion for approval.
I move, make a motion, move to approve PB 25-12, Currituck County text amendment on physical requests as in conformance with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine Current Act 2040 Vision Plan and UDO.
Okay, we have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, likewise. Motion passes. Moving on, number three, under new business, Planning Board 25-13, Currituck County, request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 6, Section 6.4, Conservation Subdivisions, to remove the requirements for submittal and approval of a conservation and development plan, and to remove the minimum acreage required for conservation subdivisions. This time, we'll hear from staff.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. This is a text amendment related to the process for major subdivisions in agriculture and single-family residential mainland. So, prior to, I think 2023 was when the change occurred, that you could no longer do a traditional subdivision in those two zoning districts on the mainland, you have to do a conservation subdivision. There's language for conservation subdivisions, this procedure for getting a conservation and development plan reviewed, where you have to submit the plan, identify wetlands and areas that will be open space, identify generally where your development's gonna go, and submit that to staff to be approved, and that plan has to be approved before you submit for subdivision. So it's almost awkward for staff to be approving what's basically a subdivision plan before it's submitted and then runs through the process, which is typically comes to, goes to the Board of Commissioners, under a quasi-judicial evidentiary hearing for a special use permit. So it seems to be a step that, since there's not an option, it doesn't seem to be necessary, and it doesn't mean that these items don't have to be identified on the preliminary plat, they still will, we'll still make sure there's plenty of open space, we'll still make sure that conservation easements are provided where they're required, based on the subdivision review standards. So this is cleaning up that to make the process a little bit more smooth. And then, there's currently a requirement that a minimum project size for a conservation subdivision is... And then, um, there's currently a requirement that a minimum project size for a conservation subdivision is is, uh, ten acres and, um, just does not feel, it's not necessary, so we're going to strike that through. Basically, meet the conservation standards and you can do a conservation subdivision. Then there's just another strike through of, uh, conservation and development plans because we will, we will review all that through the regular major subdivision process. This is consistent with the land use plan goal one, as well as environment goal one. Again, we're not taking protections away from any environmentally significant property or lands. It's just the process, making the process, um, less cumbersome for staff and the applicant, frankly. You're familiar with the text amendment review standards, and staff does recommend approval because it's in conformance with the, uh, UDO and is consistent with the land use plan, including goals one, uh, land use goal one and environment goal one. Any questions on that one?
Questions?
I have a lot.
Okay.
Procedure is being struck through. Conservation be approved as a major subdivision, according to Section, was that two four eight ECHO, major subdivision? So I went and looked at what major subdivisions are constructed of, the procedure for those. And it it looks like to, for my, for myself, what I read, it looks like we're, if we do away with the procedure, what are we going to supplant that with? What are we going to use in its place? Uh, the major subdivision chapter talks about community meetings.
Yep.
Uh, special use permits, um, capacities, you know, adequate public facilities for schools, so on and so forth. How are we going to, uh, structure this if we're not going to use the major subdivision section of the UDO?
That is what we're using, is the major subdivision section of the ordinance. Um, to your point, we could potentially leave the first part of the sentence in six point four point three.
Okay.
Um, and delete aft, where it says two point four point eight E major subdivision, put a period there, and continue with the strike through of the section. We can do that. Just so it's clear.
Yeah, I I think, and truthfully, I mean, you doing site, you actually go out to sites and you go out and look at site inspections? You actually go out and do that?
With the conservation development plan, we do.
Really?
Yes, we have, we have to.
Wow.
But ultimately, I will say that generally, the engineer has already worked with the developer. They have their site laid out, so we go out there and see it, which is nice, and we can still do that. It's just we don't have to meet, we won't have to meet the developer on site or the applicant on site before it's submitted.
Well, honestly, if you felt it was worth, you know, go ahead and strike it out if you feel that it's really not best use of your, use of your time in dealing with these.
Yeah, and it's, it's also, um, any of the reviews with respect to maybe not meeting the ordinance or trying to protect open space here or there, or getting wetlands delineated, that's all done through the preliminary plat review of a major subdivision. So, and if you look at the ordinance in the dimensional standards of the chapter of of zoning districts, it says you have to do a conservation subdivision in ag and SFM. You don't have a choice. So that's why, like, I I understand that, and we can do this for, just to make sure there's no question about what the procedure is, but it's a major subdivision.
Right, yeah. I I just want to ensure that, you know, that there is a procedure in place, um, for the conservation subdivisions.
And if it, yeah, yeah.
Because if you look down at item D under procedure, um, it looks like it's being, not being submitted, approved with it by the Board of Commission, so they won't be having any way on.
No, this, that's not what that's doing at all. It's basically saying, this section of procedure is about the conservation and development plan itself.
Okay.
Not the subdivision.
Okay.
So I'm not even sure that we need to keep that first sentence in there, but if we felt like it was helpful, we could. This is just saying you have to do this before you submit your subdivision.
Oh.
So we're saying, we're going to review all that with your subdivision, but let's take out the awkwardness of us stamping a plan that says this is an approved conservation and development plan for a fifty-lot subdivision that hasn't been reviewed by TRC or anybody else, just staff. And really what we're saying is your conservation and development plan meets the ordinance requirements.
Okay.
Before you submit. So that's why we felt like just removing that step would be helpful for everyone, would take that awkwardness out, and.
That makes sense now.
I just, I I overread sometimes.
No, I appreciate that, appreciate the thoroughness.
My other, my other question would be is why, why did away with the at least ten acres?
Um, well, there, there is, um, sometimes you have parcels that there's been enough splits out of the parent parcel that it bumps up against being a major subdivision, right? So let's say parent parcels were split and this parcel was developed as a major subdivision, which automatically makes this parcel have to be a major subdivision, but your parcel's only ten acres. You can't subdivide because it says you've got to do a major subdivision, potentially. Now, granted, there could be some mi, you can't even do the minor subdivision option, right? When I'm thinking through it, because it's already a major, you already have too many splits from the parcel.
Right.
So that was one of the reasons for removing that provision.
Okay.
Simplify is good.
Any?
The takers?
Any more questions?
No, I I I'm satisfied.
All right. Okay, any more questions for staff? All right, any more, any discussion between board members? Hearing none, I'm going to entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve. Let me find it. There we go.
Twenty-five thirteen?
Move to approve, uh, PB twenty-five thirteen, Currituck County text amendment because request is in conformance with the goals and policies of the Imagine, uh, twenty forty Vision Plan and the UDO, including land use goal one, environmental, environmental goal one. I'd also like to add, uh, condition of addition is leave the first sentence in the procedure to use, uh, outlining what a major subdivision is in Section two dot four dot eight dot echo, major subdivision.
Okay. We have a motion on the table. Do I hear a second? I'll second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. Motion passes. Okay, any announcements? Nothing?
No announcements.
All right, at this time, I'm going to entertain a motion for adjournment.
So a motion will adjourn?
A motion for adjournment. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All righty, meeting adjourned.